Good evening. Please stand as you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting for the School Town of Speedway on this eighth day of July 2025. We're working from a 13-item agenda, and the first agenda item for this evening is to approve the minutes from our last meeting of June 10, 2025.
I'll move that we approve the minutes from June 10, 2025.
Thank you very much.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on that item? Would all those in favor of approval please signify? That passes 5-0.
Minutes are signed.
Thank you very much. The second agenda item this evening is to talk about the 2026 budget assumptions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the remainder of the month for the budget of 2026, Nancy Johnson, myself, will continue to create this. At a base level, the budget will be generally similar to the current budget. Like in the past, the new budget will include the following assumptions. In this part of the meeting, this what we go through each fund. Again, the education fund, which is primarily sourced by our membership, the number of kids that attend Speedway schools. We'll operate on a balanced budget and maintain our cash balance like always. There will probably be a slight increase on health insurance, and that is a change from the past. We had a great year last year. But I believe four to five straight years, we had an increase. So that's good news. We still feel like if we have just a slight increase, that's a good day for Speedway employees. Our state support will slightly increase to 3.3%. Last year, 1.7 total for two years. The total combined, because we go through a two-year budget, is 5.2% increase. Now let me take note on something and make sure everybody understands this. We in the past, parents paid for textbooks. Now textbooks are baked into this number. So therefore, the corporation will be paying for all textbooks for students. And that's not just for Speedway, that's across the board, the state of Indiana. So with that, and you start pulling out roughly, we have a lot of assumptions and we have a lot of predictions what that number is going to be, but we've really never gone through a whole cycle of this. But we're looking around $300,000, and that eats away that increase real quick. So every corporation is going to have to deal with that. We're in a negotiation year, and they've been great. The Teachers Association and the school board of Town of Speedway, school board, we've always worked well together. They understand that, that we're going to have to do some, a lot of creative thinking on raises, because that's where that comes out of. That's where we pay teachers and the people in the education fund. So if our numbers are low in the ADM, less money. If we have a high ADM, and in Speedway, it's always a little bit of a mystery on what that kindergarten class is going to look like. So we're prepared for it, and we talk about it each and every day. So the assumptions for the education fund, we are very healthy right now. So if we take a little dip here, we can do that and deficit spend for a year out of this fund, and that's what most school corporations do every year. So we're in a good shape there. The operations fund is no good news there. The state is going to take about $850,000-some thousand from Speedway schools over the next three years. That pays for, just like it says, the operations fund is paying for the buildings and the maintenance and people that work within, basically everybody, but not teachers. So that is going to be a definite decrease on revenue. We again feel like we can operate that with a balanced budget once we do some transfers, and we do that every year anyway. So the operations fund will take a hit. The next fund is the referendum fund. We're very proud we've stayed very neutral on the rate for the last, I guess, my six years as superintendent. We feel like we can maintain that with the assessed value where it's going to land for at least a year. So the good news on that, the referendum fund, we're not looking at increasing the rate, but we are looking at decreasing assessed value, and that will take a little hit there, but I think we're going to be okay there to balance it out. The debt service, I'll start with good news. Newbie, the project about five years ago, is coming off, be paid off. The new capital improvements, though, is on the books there on the lined item for debt service. We're looking, as we approve 33 cents, it'll be a total and the total tax rate, and that's really what people really want to hear, we're looking exactly what we predicted at $1.17, which will be, again, one of the lowest in the state, definitely one of the lowest in Marion County. So even with all the new things, we still have over 90% hitting that 1% tax. We always talked about that, the residence. Most everyone shouldn't. Remember, I can't control the assessed value, but the amount of money should remain neutral from where it was. So we're very, very happy where we're at, but there's a lot of, it's exactly what it is, it's assumptions we're predicting. And remember, we're predicting for 2026. This year is 2025, so we're six months out predicting what next year is going to bring. So those are the assumptions, Mr. President, for 2026.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for the superintendent? All right. We'll move on to the third agenda item this evening, and that is to authorize the publication of the 2026 Capital Assets Plan.
The Capital Asset Plan is within the operations fund. And remember, we've changed that six, seven years ago, how this thing works. But anything over $10,000, and it's, the full plan is within your packet there. A lot of times, we put random things, not random, but things that we predict that could go wrong, so we have it in the budget to make sure we fix it, such as the air conditioner, the heat, the windows, the roofs, and a lot of equipment. So within that budget, 2026, again, we're predicting six months out, and we're doing all these projects around it. We made it very flexible that we can spend the money where we need to when things break, and we can add duct tape where we need to at certain times. Just to let you know, $10,000, that's, you know, when a tree falls on Wheeler last summer, I mean, all of a sudden, that's $14,000, $15,000 just from a tree replacing this. So that's what that plan is designed for. And this last year, let me give a list of few things what this money pays for here in the Capital Asset Plan. The mechanical room, updated with new equipment, boilers, a water booster pump, a water softener, along with various repairs in each location of our five buildings. The former boardroom was renovated. Significant improvements made to the pool, including install of new starting blocks. That was in '24 rolling in in '25. New touchpads in the pool. Additional energy-efficient LED lighting. And all our gyms and all our main areas are now up to speed with LED lighting. We started that back in 2018, replacing all lighting. It's taken us a while, but I feel pretty good where we're at there. Technology enhancements across the district. Chromebooks, digital board servers, switches, firewalls, and essential network infrastructure. I know none of this sounds really that exciting, but it's what makes us go, and that's what this is for, and other facility improvements. So this next year, we have all that included in our mechanic rooms in all buildings, along with upgrade technology, service, switches, wireless equipment. Remember, we do E-Rate each year, and we usually get a great discount on that. You know, $150,000, we only have to spend 20. So we try to stretch the money as far as we can when it comes to technology. The Capital Asset Plan is in closure or packing. The recommendation is to approve authorization of this publication of the 26 Capital Asset Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we authorize publication of the 2026 Capital Asset Plan.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions for Dr. Trebley about the Capital Asset Plan? Okay, would all those in favor of approving the publication of the 2026 Capital Asset Plan please signify? That passes 5-0. The fourth agenda item this evening is to approve special education contracted services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The recommendation is to approve the following special education contracted services with a blind-low vision with Paula Bernstein. Occupational therapy, Bethany Spencer. Libby, if I miss somebody, jump in here. Physical therapy, Michelle Goldhammer. Deaf hard hearing, Kim Yenrich. Behavioral consultant, Megan Schaefer. Speech-language pathologist, Diane Bennett. School psychologist, Lynn Williams.
One more OT is Johanna Dix.
And say that again, is it on the master sheet?
It is.
Johanna Dix, yes, I just didn't highlight it. And there's a sheet with each one of these, which each raise, that's associated with each person. We also did multiple looks at other schools, what their pain. So you can see everything in front of you that, from start to finish, a lot of work went into this. Andrea McIntosh before, but Libby did a great job getting this together for us. So I appreciate that. Is there anything else to add on that? So the recommendation is to approve as presented.
I move that we approve the special education contracted services as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there discussion or questions about the contracted services plan for special education? Would all those in favor of approval of the special education contracted services please signify? That passes 5-0. Thank you very much. The fifth agenda item this evening is to approve the high ability plan.
Good evening. For the last 10 years, you've heard from Andrea McIntosh on this plan. And I know I'm not her, but I'm going to do the best I can to fill her shoes. Each year, our district's high ability plan is brought forward for review and to present proposed updates for the upcoming school year. In the version you received in your packets, proposed additions are shown in blue, and proposed deletions are marked in red. Once approved, the finalized plan will be published to our district website. The most significant proposed update this year is in our Pathway 2 of the Identification Flowchart, found on page four and 10. Previously, we had used NWA assessments for grades K, 2, 5, and 8 as our second pathway to identify students demonstrating outstanding achievement and performance. However, due to the state's transition to the new checkpoint assessments and the elimination of the formative assessment grant for grades 3 through 8, we're proposing to replace NWEA in grades 5 and 8 with the checkpoint assessment. Because this is the first year, the checkpoint assessment will be administered statewide. We anticipate the need for future adjustments as we analyze the data. It provides and evaluate how well it aligns with our identification criteria. In addition to that, I'll be sending a newsletter in August to families of identified high ability students, which will be, which will include updated program information and helpful resources. As at this time, I ask that you approve the proposed high ability plan.
Yes.
I'll move that we approve the high ability plan as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there a discussion or any questions concerning the high ability plan?
I have a question. In that change from the NWEA to the checkpoints, is that something that the teachers are supporting?
So that is, at this point, in grades 5 and 8, there are no other standardized assessments that we are offering at this time. So we are making the teachers aware of this, and again, we'll reassess at the end of next year.
Okay, I mean, I'm glad about that. But I guess what I'm asking is, I understand that checkpoints are what the state is having us use now. But what, I mean, we could still say we're going to do, what do we, how do we know that that replacement will provide the same or better identification of students?
We don't, but that is the guidance that we're getting from the state and from other corporations that, for the time being, for Pathway 2, to stay in line with many of the other corporations and what the state is advising, we're moving forward with that option at this time. We're proposing to move forward with that option at this time.
What, how would you anticipate that you're going to assess this, you know, the validity, the, it actually, it's actually fine of this change?
Since it is a statewide assessment, the reports that they're telling, the state is telling us that we'll get is that it will have a percentile rank being compared to all other students in their grade level. And so we're confident that, at least within that bell curve, that that will identify those, and then 96 percentile or higher. And then obviously, the 94th and 95th can trigger our Pathway 3.
What's the difference between the three pathways? Why, just three different ways to grab kids?
Yeah, so the Pathway 1 is measuring the, what they outstanding ability and potential, so kind of the problem solving, their puzzles within that assessment, the COGAD assessment. Number 2 is just really the achievement. And so the assessment to measure achievement, in the past, we varied from, even before NWA, we've had other assessments that measured in that. And so the state has those three different criteria. And number 3, the Pathway 3, is if they fall within the 94th to 95th percentile range in one of the first two, that you have a third, which is SIGS, and that's pretty standard across the board. And that's a rating scale that's completed by multiple parties.
Okay. So am I hearing you that they don't just do one pathway?
That's correct.
They have to do all, they have to be, no, they do do. They can satisfy by any one of those three.
Correct, yep.
Mr. Gay, I can, your question about the checkpoints is a legitimate question, and it's one that, when NWA went away because of formative assessment went away, we had a standard that said if you scored this much as a RIT score, you were considered, you know, high ability. A neighboring school district stopped using NWA last year and started using checkpoints, and they started giving checkpoints to students. You could opt in to do that last year. And they gave checkpoints to students that were in the high ability program. And they found out in the first checkpoint, there was a pretty high correlation between students that did well on the checkpoint. I can't quote you the number, I have it in my office. They did very well on checkpoint 1, and these were kids that were already identified in the, in the high ability program. So they're using that checkpoint. We're all dealing with the same thing. You know, we were used to using NWA, and now we don't have that. How else are we going to identify kids that are high ability other than teachers in the classroom? And it was a pretty substantial, it's a pretty substantial thing they came up with that said, okay, and so we're, we're going to do that too. We're going to take our kids that are considered high ability, let, you know, look at their scores on checkpoint 1 and see how that correlates to how we have identified them to be in the high ability program. So we're all kind of, all trying to figure it out. How do you do it without the extra money to get NWA for those grade levels? So.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about this? Okay, would all those in favor of approving the high ability plan please signify? That passes 5-0. The sixth item this evening is to approve the paraprofessional and substitute teacher hourly rates.
Thank you, Mr. President. The recommendation approve the following hourly rates. Substitute teachers, if anybody's interested in being a substitute teacher, please let us know. It's gone up 50 cents to $16 per hour, which we're $112 a day now. So when I first started, that was about $96 a day. So it's gone up a little bit. I know everyone wants more, but $16 an hour for substitutes. Paraprofessionals, 50% increase, $17 per hour. Paraprofessionals, self-contained environmental settings, a 50 cents increase to $18.50. The bus monitor, which is in a, again, in an environment of self-contained special ed students, $18 per hour. And English learner family community engagement liaison at $30 an hour, and that's for a 200-day contract. So my recommendation is approve those increases.
I move that we approve the paraprofessional and substitute teacher hourly rate increases.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions concerning the paraprofessional substitute teacher hourly rate? Seeing none. Would all those in favor of approving the paraprofessional and substitute teacher hourly rates for the next year please signify? Passes 5-0. The seventh agenda item this evening is to approve the ed flex waivers.
This is now a routine matter. We've done it for two years. This was brought to our attention last year, and we did it, and it worked out well. But the School Town of Speedway plans to apply for two ed flex waivers that provide continued flexibility and key federal requirements. The first waiver allows broader qualifications for hiring a paraprofessional in Title I elementary schools, helping address staffing shortages without compromising quality. The second waiver provides flexibility in how we use Title IV funds, allowing us to allocate resources based on local data-driven needs rather than fixed federal spending categories. These are renewals of waivers we've successfully used in the past. The public comment is invited through July 15 with information available on the IDOE website. The recommendation is approve these ed flex waivers.
Yes.
I move that we approve the ed flex waivers.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or any questions concerning the ed flex waivers? All right. Would all those in favor of approving the ed flex waivers please signify by raising a hand? That passes 5-0. The eighth agenda item this evening is to present the ECA audit findings.
I'm very blessed to be, to be around board members that have been on the board for many, many years. And I don't think we've ever had a report quite like this. So if everybody could sit down, I'd appreciate that. This is the most outstanding report we've ever received on the data. I have to report that our ECA, which is extracurricular account, which is, Shana Bradley is our treasurer for that. Nancy Johnson does our corporation, she does our ECA. Shana does a tremendous job. She's been here for a few days, and I just really want to say thank you to her. Not that she's going to be listening, but she's been around for a long time, and she just does a great job. And to say that, we were audited in our ECA, and I can just read the findings here. No reportable instances of noncompliance. So that makes a day for this table very happy. So that is my presentation of our reports of the ECA audit.
Thank you, Dr. Trebley.
Please pass, yeah, pass down to, you know, the, and that's, that's from the ground up, that means, everybody's doing what they're supposed to be. And so we really appreciate that.
Kind of a fun fact, I sign probably, I don't know, an average of 20 to 30 POs that go in and out across my desk. And that's a lot of people signing off on, a day, a day. And if I miss a day, then there's 60 the next day when I come in. So that's pretty awesome, that a school corporation go through. We sign everything, I think I sign everything at least three times before we actually pay somebody. So our, we've, we've done a great job the last five years here cleaning that up too, to making sure things are above bar. So I'm excited about that. Thank you.
The ninth agenda item this evening is to update the ISBA policy, and this one has to do with attendance.
Yep. So last year, we did a great job writing the attendance policies and updating those. We did a great job of those with the help of several U on the board. And then the new laws came out and asked us to change some of that stuff. So there's some minor changes to it, very minor. It's, it gives you an idea of how well it was written last year. And that is that you look on page 2 of the attendance, and it's, it's now no longer permissible to suspend or expel a student that has been an habitual truant. Notice that that, that provision's going to expire in July of next year.
So we can revise it again.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're going to give it a year to see how that works. So we took out some of the things that were, that we had as steps. And then the last thing is, is there's a change in that if a person has been an attendance issue, now we have to meet with parents within 10 instructional days. And we were pretty much meeting that anyway. If someone became a, an attendance issue, we had meetings with parents for that. So that's, we had five in our, in our previous policy, and now it's, it's recommended we put it at the 10. So with that, I would ask that we approve the attendance policy as presented.
I move that we approve the updated ISBA policy regarding attendance.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Is there a discussion or questions concerning the updated attendance policy?
The only discussion that I would offer is just to make sure that the public understands that this is a policy that comes to us from the ISB, the state. It's not, we don't sit around and decide that we're going to change steps 5 and 6, and here's what Speedway is going to do. This is a policy that's driven by legislation that's passed each year. And when the legislation passes, then, you know, we are fortunate enough to have the ISBA tell us, oh, hey, such and such policies need to be amended, and we do that.
Great point.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the updated attendance policy, please signify. That passes unanimously. The 10th agenda item is to acknowledge the receipt of $206,311.38 in grants. The 11th agenda item this evening is the personnel report.
The July 8, 2025 personnel reports has three resignations. First one is Morgan Klingerman. Morgan was an elementary teacher at Wheeler Elementary that went on an FMLA leave about a year ago, and she has notified us that she doesn't intend to return. Second is Sam Aaron, who, and Sam has resigned his position as social studies teacher at Speedway Junior High School. Sam is in his position as assistant varsity baseball coach at Speedway High School. I can tell you that Sam is pursuing a career as a firefighter. And Jim Murley, special education teacher at Speedway High School has submitted his letter of resignation. Under employment, Zach Reichley, who has worked for us as a volunteer football coach, is now in a paid position as an assistant football coach and is splitting a stipend. Claudia McClure is being recommended for cafeteria, Speedway cafeteria supervisor position. Everyone knows, everybody knows Claudia because she's the one that makes all our food for us, and happy for her. Delaney Ruble is our band choir teacher at Speedway High School. And Carly Smith is the girls' varsity tennis coach at Speedway High School. The following individuals are being recommended as volunteer coaches. Peyton Ridge, volleyball at Speedway High School. Jay Deem, football at Speedway High School. And Deonte Means, boys' basketball at Speedway High School. With that, I ask you approve the personnel report as presented.
Mr. President, I move to approve the personnel report as written.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Is there any questions or, are there any questions or discussion on this?
I'll recuse myself.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor of approving the personnel report as presented, please signify. And that passes 4-0. The 12th agenda item is to recognize our visitors and ask if there's other business from our administrative staff.
Yeah, I'd like to mention that we are currently in registration season. So parents, if you're listening to this, we'd like you to go online and register. If you attended Speedway last year, last school year, that you can go onto our website and register your student. If you are new to Speedway, you still go on our website, but they'll ask you to come in and meet with our principals. Register soon, please, so that we can have a very good idea of what kind of numbers that we're going to have in each classroom, classroom on August 1st. So I'd ask that you do that as soon as you can.
Thank you. Any other announcements or other business? All right, then we will adjourn ourselves to approve and sign claims. Thank you all very much.